Alright, we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, we'll start with flag sleeping.
Pledge of limitations.
Wishes to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where witches hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, roll call.
So we have no good document to do that with. So we'll just, we'll just make this work. We'll just start with Commissioner Tanik.
Was that me, Tanik?
Yep. Uh, Commissioner.
Yeah. Here.
Commissioner Jones. Chair Barisi.
Right.
Commissioner Irs.
In the house.
Commissioner Carberry did text this afternoon and indicated she was not feeling well, didn't want to bring her terms. I appreciate that. And so we have Commissioner Layton.
Here.
Alright, we do have a quorum.
Alright, first order of business is approval of last meeting we had, which was, I think it was sixteen. Uh, did I have a chance to read the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes. Then, okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the minutes as read. Uh, can we vote first?
Yeah. So for the minutes, Commissioner Layton.
Yes.
Commissioner Irs.
Yes.
Commissioner Connell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tanik.
Yes.
And Chair Barisi.
Yes.
They are approved.
Okay, and it looks like we have a couple vote hearings get through tonight. Um. Are we doing these? Are these on the?
I'm sorry, pardon?
We've got these two public hearings.
Yep.
Okay. Um. I don't have the verbiage.
We need to script. We're going to do the script.
But.
Well, uh.
We can.
We can get through this.
We can get through it the best we can. Uh, okay, so, uh, let's start, I'm gonna start by calling vote here in order. It's a site design review, RVW twenty-five dash zero 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 five, uh, or Teton West of Washington. Uh, does nobody have any in the audience? If we have anyone that do you want to?
Yes, we do have, we do have truth and character with ODOT, whose interest is in the, is in the next hearing, but, um. Yeah, we just seem to make that specific, uh, testimony has to be to the criteria.
Yeah, uh, so essentially all testimony given, uh, which I'll give you order in a moment, but it should be substantial to the criteria included into, uh, in within the site design review. Uh, we'll start with any proponents, uh, for the, the plan with, and then move to, uh, anyone. What's the word? Um.
Opponents. Opponents.
And then anyone, uh, with neutral testimony, and then if there's a rebuttal needed, we can have one of those afterwards. Uh, like all comments made to be addressed, please through myself, uh, try to keep them short and concise to, uh, under five minutes. Uh, if we end up having any guests outside of that afterwards, uh. We'll, I mean, we'll, we'll just say outside of the public hearing. Uh, I would like to ask anyone specifically for the site design review, does anyone on the planning commission, uh, want to disclose any, uh, conflict of interest or bias?
For exporte contact.
Exporte contact, excuse me, this. Uh, does anyone want to challenge any commissioners' conflict of interest, bias, or exporte contact? Uh, is there anything else we're getting?
No, just staff report, which tonight will be done by first of all, Stephie Case.
Perfect. Uh, can we start with that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first item that we have tonight is the site design review type three of the Vol Potato Storage and Associated Structures. Um, we're starting on page five of your packet. The applicant in this case is Teton West of Washington and the owner is Oregon Potato Company. So this property is located on the south side of Columbia Avenue Northeast between Olson Road and Omen Boulevard. The zoning for the property is general industrial. And we go down there, there's currently a small, uh, truck scale structure that they've been, uh, indicated that will stay as part of this. Um, there was a site team meeting that was held on March sixth, twenty twenty-five with you area utilities and public service providers. And during that meeting, the Boardman Fire Marshall requested coordination for the installation of, uh, an additional fire hydrant on or near the site. I'm kind of working through, so access permits are not going to be required from the city as the road and that location is actually, um. A Port of Moro Road, they have access jurisdiction to property and they would need to coordinate with the Port of Moro to either show us that the two existing access points um, meet their standard or they need access permits from the port. Um, they also need to work cooperatively with them regarding any circulation or any transportation requirements in that area. That pretty much covers it for access. Um, they do need to calculate and submit a fire access plan for review by the Fire Marshall. And of course coordinate with him about that fire hydrant as well. That's listed as a condition of approval. One of the interesting things about this is because of the zoning of it, twenty percent of the site is required to be landscaped. So landscaping plan will be required prior to the issuance of the development review permit, but that is listed as a condition of approval. Um, I, I kind of went on here to page eleven, I'll direct you there. Any parking would be onsite. Offsite parking would not be allowed along Columbia Avenue Northeast. Um. It is, uh, designated parking area is not necessarily needed for this use if the building is not considered occupiable. I spoke with the building official about that. Um, and so public or disabled parking is not necessary for this project. So that criteria will be met based on the use of the property. Um, wastewater and water is available on Columbia Avenue Northeast. Wastewater would be, uh, uh, served by the City of Boardman. We have a line that runs along there and then water would be served by the Port of Moro. Uh, the port wasn't available the day of our site team meeting, but our engineer indicated that water may already be there onsite from the port. Uh, the applicant would just need to confirm that with them or work with the port to get that there. Um, stormwater shall be maintained onsite during the pre-application meeting. The applicant indicated that these structures, as they are designed and built now, have their own stormwater management system. So it is included as a condition of approval that storm managed, uh, stormwater is managed onsite. And then, uh, finally, the construction plan shall be reviewed, uh, by the city engineer prior to the final approval. And then on page sixteen, there are eleven conditions of approval that I would direct you to. And then, um, seventeen through one, two, seven, uh, you will find your vicinity map that shows the location of the property. And then, um, the, uh, materials that they provided, uh, for the preliminary mechanical designs. So they are really large buildings, which is why it's coming in front of you tonight. Um. And it's got associated fan house structures and, um. Everything required for data storage. I'm not an expert in potato storage, but yeah, any questions for me?
Uh, have they indicated they're looking to install a fence around? Or just putting verbiage in there just like in case they want to?
Uh, we put it in there in case they want to. They didn't say that they wanted one and the application materials don't indicate the need for one. Um, I just don't know if later on they'll come back and say that they want to separate them so as to join a property.
Seen a lot of potato storage and then I've had a fence around it.
Yeah, right. Bency is just not down there.
Well, if the port is providing the water and the city is getting rid of the water, how much are they planning on using and can the city manage that amount of water flow? Because I know some of those plants down there use a lot of water and so will it hurt our infrastructure?
No, and to be clear, it's still city water. It's the city water that we sell to the port who then distributed, distributes it. So it's water that comes out of our system and then is distributed by the port because it's potable. And then it comes back into the wastewater. So, yeah.
And we did have a little bit of discussion about this when it came to the stormwater management. Um, he said, once the potatoes are in there, they want them as dry as possible.
There's very little water used in there except for fire. That's it.
Yeah, so.
I just wasn't sure if it was going to be like the capacity of like the plants and stuff, you know, like how much water are we planning on using?
Oh, no, no, we had that same question.
Best in your house, probably.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's way, it's probably under even our residential use. Yeah.
And in the pre-application meeting, the applicant did talk to us a little bit about those fan structures and kind of how they work. And, and I think the intent is to try to keep it as dry as possible for long-term storage. So, yeah.
Quite important.
The only thing I would add, um, on this one is that, that landscaping standard, um, I've scratched my head around that landscaping standard since I started at the City of Boardman. Um, our commercial standard is like ten percent and industrial is twenty percent. They're not in an industrial property in Boardman that has twenty percent landscaping. With maybe the exception of, of the, the, the land, Lem Weston, the very far end one, because there's that huge field out in front that's.
Kelby's. Has a huge yards.
I guess Kelby has a fair amount of landscaping too. Um, but most of our industrial development has little or no landscaping associated with it. So.
Doesn't have potato storage.
Well, and what's interesting with this particular one, you'll notice on the site plan, there's actually a green space out in front of this property that's been there as a green space for a long time.
Yeah, and it's in front of the jailhouse.
Yeah.
Which will stay there, right?
Right. And so we anticipate that they will probably maintain that landscape area. And, and honestly, my sense is if they just maintain that landscape area, that would be great. I, I, I don't.
The port does it now, don't they?
Well, or, so Oregon Potato, the, the two soccer fields that are across the street, those are owned by Oregon Potato, Oregon Potato. Um, the rep district manages those. They, they manage the watering, they, they mow them, they do all of that. I don't know who, who takes care of that little bit of green space in front of this particular piece of property. But again, Oregon Potato is the owner. And Oregon Potato does have a little bit of landscaping kind of in their, in their strip there. So, um.
So would the soccer field count along with this to make it meet that requirement? If it's, it's kind of a whole area in, in general, even though it's across the street from it in Catty Corner, it's still.
Yeah, I mean, you guys could make that finding and, and just state that, that you, your senses of the, as long as the soccer fields are maintained. The, the question is, will they always be owned by Oregon Potato or will, will they not? Um, the, um, they're in common ownership. It is despair, it's discreet properties. So one of the properties could be sold in the future. I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of six of one, half of a dozen, you know, it's, it's kind of how you wanted to go with that. Um, I, I just wanted to kind, one of the things that we are going to fix when we go through the, the development code update is we're going to have a real conversation about what those landscaping standards really should be. I, one of the things I really appreciated that the port has done over the last many years is that they really tried to figure out how to make the entry into the port really nice and they have done a lot of landscaping where landscaping works. But in an industrial facility, to just require landscaping for landscaping sense or, or purposes, I, I, I struggle with that a little bit. And I don't know what the right standard is. I think twenty is too much. Twenty percent of a site is a lot of land.
Yeah, one good for the size, that's very large, yeah.
It's very large. Um, so. Anyway, I, if, if y'all wanted to make some comment about that and, and as to how we should, how we should move forward with that for this particular project, staff would welcome that. Um, you know, if, about maintaining what's already onsite or, you know, something along, along those lines and not fully enforcing the twenty percent because twenty percent of that site is a lot. Now granted, they don't, they're not going to have a big paint, they, they may not have any paint parking area. The building is going to cover a lot of the site. Um, there'll certainly be places that they could landscape, but I guess I have experienced times where communities have required landscaping and then they might plant the row of trees or put the grass in. But if they don't water it, maintain it, it looks worse after that than it did before that.
Yeah, I'm a big fan of landscaping, follow the function. Like, I, I think like directing traffic, you can direct traffic and where you can and can't park. Huge fan of that. I think that works really well.
Right.
Reasonably.
Mm-hmm, in a commercial setting.
Yeah.
You've got a parking lot, you want a couple of trees out there so that you've got some, some shade for the parking area or, you know, the front entry of a, of a nice building. Landscaping is great pair.
But in this one too, like, you know, you don't want people driving in right up to the scale, well, for the green grass there, people won't drive up there.
Well, and not necessarily green grass. If they had a nice like rock garden with a couple, uh, little statues or something in there that, that serve a purpose and look nice. Cause I mean, it's filled with weeds. What's the point?
Right.
So does it have to be green would be my thing. Does, does the landscaping have to be a green space or can it be anything that serves a decorative purpose?
So landscaping standard does have a, you can have some, uh, xeriscaping is allowed and you can have some ground cover, but there is a, there is a I don't want to say green, but there is a growth component to the landscaping standard. So you do have to have something that is growing, um, but it could be bushes and, and, you know, daffodils and tulips that bloom in the spring. Um, you know, and then, and then a couple bushes or a couple of trees can, can, can meet the intent of that. So, um. Again, just maintaining what's there, I think is a, is a big start. Or, or, and, and to, would be sufficient.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, uh, any other questions for staff? Thank you. Uh, I guess we're time to move on to who wants to speak as a proponent.
Right, and the applicant is not here tonight.
Okay. Uh, we have one guest online.
Yeah, Teresa's with ODOT.
Oh.
Yep.
Uh, okay, so, uh, just for, very deeply, is there anyone that wishes to speak as a proponent for, for this plan? Uh, who should speak against, as an opponent to this plan? Anybody have the neutral testimony? Who? I don't have nothing to say. Well, we have more rebuttal this morning, that's for sure. Uh. Okay, I have time, I guess this would be the time when, uh, planning commission can discuss the plan. Is there anything anyone wants to talk about it? We haven't. Nope. New potato shed, new potato shed in the land of potato shed down there.
Same.
All over to it.
Putting another one in the middle of everything.
Yeah, it's been a long time, a lot of years since one's been built.
Mm-hmm. It does sound like, uh, with a lot of new technology, we'll probably see, um, some of these older ones replaced over the next several years. That was indicated in the pre-application meeting that we had with them as well. So.
The good wind, one of them might blow away again anyway.
Well, the windstorm a few years ago did some significant damage to a group of them down there. So.
With them increasing in size and then potentially moving the other ones and making them bigger, are we going to have to worry about the amount of trucks down there? Is, is the traffic flow is going to impede the vehicles trying to come and go on that road? So is the only.
Require twenty percent.
Yeah, so certainly the, uh, the point of harvest is the largest impact. Um, and replacing three of the current ones with one big one would not change the storage capacity significantly. So we are adding one. Um, so, you know, that, that timeframe of, well, depends on what kind of potato it is. But late August through November, we'll see an increase in, in, you know, ten-wheel trucks coming in to deliver. Um, I'm not quite sure, I, I've never paid close enough attention or spent enough time on that part of, part of the road to know how they get the potatoes out of the storage and get them to Oregon Potato. There's got to be a process. I don't know.
Yeah, there's a machine that.
And they, they probably don't load them in a truck and take them across the street.
Yeah, they do.
Oh, do they?
But they're semi, they're the forty foot or eighty foot trailers.
Okay.
Not the small ones. And they use those, uh, jumper trucks, whatever they're called, the little snub-nosed thing.
Right.
To run back.
And we don't have a lot of testing traffic, so I guess we wouldn't worry about anybody getting.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it would be much different than we see it now in the fall. Busy, I mean, it's always busy, already, you know. I've never seen a traffic if you, those potatoes down there in thirty, almost thirty years. See, you got your finger ripped off down here though. Okay, uh. Well, uh, I guess I, unless I have anything, uh.
Go ahead and gavel, gavel the hearing closed.
Oh, yeah, close the hearing at.
We'll have, we'll have a script next time.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh. Yeah, anything else before we go for, uh, entertain a motion on this?
No, I, I mean, just a standard motion of approval is fine. Again, if you want to address anything with the landscaping, you could include that here in, um.
Yeah, they would, they would also want to make sure include, um. Include or exclude the recommendations of the report, if I have to get verbiage of motion. Anyone other than me, I'll be looking for a motion to accept slash reject slash amend, uh, the recommendation as proposed with, uh, the recommendations of the planning official.
Okay, um, I recommend that we improve site design review, RVW twenty-five dash zero 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 five with the, um, recommendation from the planning commission or planning official as well as, um, maintaining the current space for their.
Okay, alright, so in a sense, okay, so motion is to approve site design review, uh, RVW twenty-five dash five to include the planning official recommendations and a recommendation of keeping the existing landscaping. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So we have a, a motion and a second.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Can you, can we roll call the vote?
We can. So Chair, uh, Commissioner Connell.
Yep.
Commissioner Irs.
Yes.
Commissioner Layton.
Yes.
Commissioner Tanik.
Yes.
Chair Barisi.
Uh, yes, as well. Okay, motion carries. Uh, we'll go right into our second public hearing of the night. Which is, uh, for subdivision, uh, just D M twenty-five dash one. Where the city board is the applicant and the owner, we'll call the vote hearing, uh. To order. Uh, okay, so this. Well, I'm just going to say we're going to follow the same format. Uh, we'll start with the staff court, we'll move into any proponents, uh, for the application, any opponents, any neutral testimony. Uh, and then, uh, any rebuttal if necessary. Uh, before we start with that, is there anyone on the planning mission that wants to disclose any bias, conflict of interest or exporte contact regarding this? Is there anyone that wants to challenge a planning commissioners' bias and party argument? Conflict of interest, exporte contact. Okay, alright, hearing done, uh, let's move into staff court.
Okay, so this one is a type three decision process, much like the other one. Um, the difference is this one is a subdivision and the applicant owner, City of Boardman, the request would be to divide the property into five lots and dedicate the rights of way for future development of streets that connect the existing rights of way for traffic circulation. Uh, this property is just west of South Main Street and north of City Center Drive at the intersection of Tat Home. So just right back here, right here. Um, the name of the proposed subdivision is Oregon Trail subdivision. It is not in conflict with any other subdivision name in the county. And, uh, this proposal would facilitate, facilitate a transition of the rights of way for adjoining properties. Um, any proposed additions do need to be shown as identified on the preliminary flat. Um. For access for these ones, each lot would have access to the street that it is fronting and access permit would be required for each parcel at the time of development. And, uh, this proposal is within the influence area of the Main Street uh, interchange, uh, area management plan, AMP. And the internal circulation should provide reasonable alternatives to some existing access points and property entrances from Main Street according to that document. Um, with this, as you'll notice, the dedication of Pride, which currently doesn't exist, um. Uh, would provide a mid-block alternative for the future developments, the norm between proposed Pride Drive and Southwest Front Street. Future development on proposed parcel two would necessitate at least some sort of dedication of a cross-easement to allow for alternative reasonable access for properties that currently have existing access from South Main Street. Um, so I did want to point out, if I can direct you to, um, the preliminary on that. What we're talking about there is that skinny parcel two to the north of Pride Drive. And then the interchange area management plan addresses all of the properties along here on South Main Street and identifies that reasonable alternate access should be provided as part of that plan. So that would address those. Um. The conditions of approval, um, we just have the two precedent conditions of approval, including an updated engineering plan prior to the development of infrastructure. And then, of course, a final flat for review within two years of the date that, uh, we signed the findings. Um, and then the subsequent condition of approval would be prior to the development of parcel two. So while not necessarily applicable to this in particular, it would be in effect at the time of development of parcel two. Uh, alternative reasonable access needs to be provided to the property that joins and fronts South Main Street. Um, page thirty-one is your vicinity map that shows the location of the property and the thirty-two in the packet is the, uh, subdivision preliminary flat. Um. We did receive a comment letter, which I think you guys received yesterday in your email uh, from the Oregon Department of Transportation regarding the, um. The alternate access requirement in the, um. Interchange area management plan. And, um, the gist of this letter, they've asked for some amended language, uh, to the, um. Conditions of approval and the, um. It's a. Four point three point one four oh. Approval criteria B three. Um, they've asked that it states, so it currently states an access permit will be required for each parcel at the time of development. And they have asked that we add and not allow to have access, direct access to Main Street at the end of that sentence. And then on the condition of approval, they've asked that we change it to properties and then add at the end of the sentence over time. And then on the condition of approval, they've asked that we change it to properties and then add at the end of the sentence over time. Um, and I will let Carla address staff's comments on that.
All right, so staff comments, this is, this is staff comments. I suppose this could also be the proponents' comments. Cause it is, it is the city's application on this particular one. So the challenge that we have um around around the interchange is the is the Main Street um interchange area management plan. Um, we're, we're not necessarily opposed to the first request to amend the statement in approval criteria B three. Um, to some degree, and you can, you can uh look at the plat. Uh, to some degree, uh, we're not gonna get to the point where we would ever see. Um, an access permit issued on Main Street um from these properties. The portion of parcel two that fronts on Main Street is the corner. Uh, you couldn't place an access on parcel two from Main Street. There's not enough space. It's too close to the intersection. Um, the problem with with allowing an access onto parcel one um is the B P A. Uh, there's not a use that we can, would could have authorized on the B, on the, on the parcel one that's under the. Under the power lines. Um, you, you don't wanna park under it. Uh, you, you, you can park too long under those B P A lines. Uh, if you have, you've noticed you'll get a little charge when you go to, you know, open your door. Um, so parking isn't unauthorized. You say they discourage that kind of parking. So if you see somebody parked under the power lines, they're probably, they're doing some kind of work and they're gonna be moving on fairly quickly. And they probably have a ground chain drain uh to protect them. So access from, access to parcel one is, is not a, not a reasonable item to account for. And there's nothing else that that fronts on South Main Street. We're not opposed to um you, uh, we're gonna ask you to accept the letter as part of the record. And we're not opposed to making that change to that criteria. I just want you to understand that whether that's stated or not. There's not a reasonable uh um likelihood that access would ever be granted to Main Street. Based on what those, how those properties are configured and what their, what their future purpose is going to be.
Which is.
The, the B P A, the portion that's under the B P A, this, the city is, that's gonna be um a natural area. We'll have a walking path on it. Actually, proposed parcel one, the one in the upper northwest corner, it's, it's barely, it's. Point eight acres, if I'm reading that right.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a parking area in support of the green space under the B P A lines. That's what that future use is. And the future use of parcel four, we're not sure yet. It's, it'll, it's attached. It's adjacent to the senior center. We may work with the senior center to add that to their property or not. Um, and then parcel five sits behind, well, it's adjacent to two vacant pieces of property, just right out the, the, the door here, kitty cor- kitty corner from us. And it's behind the library. Um, the library actually has kind of indicated they would have an interest in that parcel five to basically reconfigure the library. So it would, which could be a benefit because uh, though we are gonna work with the library to close their Main Street access when Oregon Trail is built. And change their access to come off of Oregon Trail. So them expanding into that back portion could make sense. So again, we don't know a lot about the development, but um the impacts of the library would, would be. The same use on a potentially larger piece of property. And that's, that, that's barely been talked about. Um. The second request um that, that ODOT makes in their letter for staff is a little, a little more concerning. Um, and I think if you look on the backside of the letter, they included um figure five point six. Out of the I A M P, if you put their, I don't know if it's two pages or if it's on the backside of the letter. Um, but figure five point six is a representation of what was identified some. Fifteen years ago for how this area might be reconfigured. And, and they're showing um on the west side that um. The street to the west of Main Street was, was pushed right up against uh the roadway in there. The reality is, is that where that road goes and connects to Tat Home. Here outside in front of City Hall cannot be achieved that way. And the reason it cannot be achieved that way is because of the sway of the power lines right there. So when you wanna go under the power lines, you have to go under at or near the towers. Because that's where the, the wire is the furthest away from the ground. And when you've got that sway, and if you pay attention in the summer when it's hotter, that sway gets lower to the ground. In the winter, it's not as low. But there is a clear requirement for B P A to travel under that line. And so if you, you'll notice on the partition plat. It's actually shown on the partition plat where the road goes through there, we've identified where the three towers are. Two are on the east side of Southwest um First Street and one is on the west side of Southwest First Street. That's where we can get under the B P A line. So when you do that, you don't end up with this alignment. You end up with an alignment that's over here. I think I've got my distance. Yeah, over here. You ended with an alignment over here, not here. So it, it changes, you know, and, and I don't know why they didn't accommodate for that. That should have been a known. Restriction is not the right word, but unknown kind of, we can't, we can't get to this. This doesn't work. Um, but they didn't for whatever reason. So they're really showing that road in the IMP and a location you can't build it. So working with the developer, the road is proposed further to the west. And for the most part, kind of comes down and is fairly straight, has a little dog leg in it to kind of accommodate getting through with those power lines.
How does that, how does that affect the um, the motel that was supposed to go in there? That, with the restaurant and that little RV parking?
Yeah, so, so their development is on the north side of this. Their development is up here. So the road will go through the middle. The, the hotel is proposed on the outside. And the RV resort is proposed here with the road going between them.
Okay.
And I'll just say that the RV resort is probably not gonna happen and they have some uses that they are proposing.
Sure.
Which I don't, we don't have an application, so I don't have the ability to speak about. But there'll be some other uses here. The road will go between them and the hotel will be um farthest to the west.
Sure.
Um, so when, when they ask for changes to subsequent condition of appro, to the subsequent condition of approval. Um, they're asking that prior to the development of proposed parcel two, and how do they modify that? Alternative reasonable access to the adjoining, we say property that front South Main Street must be achieved. They want us to talk about properties and then they want us to add the words over time. And staff has some concerns with that. Um, and again, uh, ODOT will be able to make their case here shortly. Um, but our concern is. I have some concern about asking for somebody to commit something. Um, that we may not be able to meet what's called the Nolan and Dolan test relative to um impacts. Um, the terminology is, I'll find the words here, um, an essential nexus and rough proportionality. So um I'm concerned about that. I haven't researched it enough to know specifically, but I do have concerns about it. I think it's one thing to work with um the applicant for proposed parcel two, whoever that may be. On, on how they might allow somebody to get from, and so the properties that we're talking about. Are identified again, if you go back to this here. It's identified as fourteen, fourteen and fifteen hundred on here. So it's the laundromat and car wash parcel. And then the parcel just to the south of this, it's owned by Reyna Pacheco. So they currently have Main Street access and the IMP is working to close all of the access points on Main Street. We are advocating for those accesses to be maintained as right in, right out. Um, and of course, the IMP and ODOT's position is that they should be closed. Um, but you can't close them unless they have some other access. People have to be able to get in and out of there. Um, you can't land lock somebody's property. So the IMP envisions. And, and even in, in this, even in this configuration of the IMP, there is not a road that back, that connects to the back of these properties. They would have to achieve some mechanism to get from the back of their properties to this baggage road. Uh, which again is a little further away now because of the alignment with the, with the power lines. Um, they're asking for us to create some mechanism where there will be a connection here. Uh, from the back of these properties through this parcel two. Um, and either bring it over to the proposed front street or take it down to the proposed Prague.
Do you have a right of way there?
There is no right of way. So we would be, it, it is encumbering a future. Developers um property with potential easements to serve those properties on the backside.
Okay.
Well, what developers will you wanna do that?
It, it's a, it's a difficulty. Um, working with it, so the developer, so when Mr. Mon owned this property. He had worked with both Mr. Jones on the east and with Mr. Um. Malhe and, and Mr., what's Harvey's last name? Singh. Um, Mr. Singh about acquiring the property outside of the easement, not the property under the easement. Well, actually, I think. With both of them. It, it may have been the property under the easement as well. Um, I don't think Mr. Jones wanted that. I think he just wanted the property um north of the easement. Um, I think um. Harvey Singh and Ron and Dean Malhe would have been, they were open to, to whatever, because they wanted to acquire what were proposing as parcel two. At some point in time, once we finish the land, we finish the land partition on the other side, when we finish the subdivision on this side. The properties that we decide to release or put for sale will go through a surplus process with the city council. Um, so that's the first step. Before parcel two will develop, the city council's gonna have to make a determination to surplus that. And then make it available and then um again, work through the process to. To, to actually sell the property. Um. So there's still a lot of process ahead of us. But at the point in time that parcel two develops. What the condition is, as it currently reads, is that we're willing to work with that developer. To get access to tax lot fifteen hundred, which is currently there and has not yet been developed. Now, the reality is at the point in time that, that. Um, they come forward and ask for additional uses on the balance of the property. That front, that has the baggage on tax lot fourteen hundred, we can work with them with their next development permit. Review process to see if we can figure out how to get alternative access to fourteen hundred. It might be that we can figure out how to do something that would accommodate both of them with one easement. Um, but you're absolutely right, Commissioner Layton. What developer would want to do that? And that's where my concern is in the Nolan and Dolan process. Um, that's a taking's conversation. Conversation. And again, the, the terminology that they, that was used in those decisions. Um, is first off, having an essential nexus. And then the second one is rough proportionality. And I, I, I haven't done enough to know what my, if my concerns are valid. It may be that we having an IMP that says that this has to happen is enough to require it. Um, but I am concerned about that. And I think that a landowner could say, uh, you're gonna have to. You know, you're gonna have to compensate me or, or show some other means of this happening. Um, and it's a bridge we will have to cross and probably in the not too distant future.
Well, they, 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 they'll, they're all right with the right in, right out on the north side, right?
No.
That we had talked about earlier or once ago or whatever it was, that we're gonna do on the north side?
Yeah.
Say they, what do you mean?
ODOT.
Oh.
So, well, no, ODOT as, as a group wants us to, to move towards closing.
Right, but we've determined that we're gonna do the right in, right out, right there.
As an interim measure, but they're gonna continue to push us to move towards closure. So that was part of that whole conversation with the stoplight.
Yeah.
Um, which in the end, the council decided to just pull the project. So we're not actually having that conversation on the north side.
Oh.
So the street light project has been pulled. It may come back at some point in time. Um, with the T S P update that is currently underway. Um, which Mr. Jones is on the T S P pack. Um, with that process underway, I think we will, by the time we adopt the T S P in December. Have better clarity about where current trips are, kind of what timing is. It won't be a replacement to IMP, but I think it will give us. Fresher information and insight into what the impacts along Main are from Boardman Avenue to Oregon Trail. Um, but we're most likely gonna be in a position where. Once the T S P is updated, we'll probably be amending the interchange area management plan. We'll probably go back and relook at that. And review it. Um, that'll be a city-led process. Um, and see what comes out of it.
My point asking was, was it should be the same on both sides.
It should be the same on both sides. And so the IMP does, does work towards closing all of those accesses onto Main Street. And I think that's why the city is really interested in the T S P update and then updating the IMP. Because we wanna have a conversation about finding ways to preserve some of those access points and maintain them as right in, right out. Um, it removes the left turns, which is the. The dangerous maneuver. I mean. The video already shows this is, it's a pretty dangerous maneuver out there now. And we drive it every day. We know that it's dangerous. I, I, I know a lot of people who purposely take a circuitous route to get around Boardman. To avoid making a left-hand turn.
Why worry over sequel then on the interchange?
Well, yeah, I come in, I come in every morning. I come in, I get off on the westbound off ramp and I make a left. And it's like, there are times of the day I have sat there for several minutes before I make that turn to make sure I make it safely.
Same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and going the other direction, you can't see it down the road anyway, across the bridge.
Right.
I mean, the fence, the, the safety fence thing has got you, everything blocked.
Yeah.
Can't see what's coming.
Yeah. Well, have we ever thought about widening that bridge?
Actually.
Because that seems to be the biggest thing. If, if you could get. Two roads on each side versus seville lane, we wouldn't have nearly the amount of congestion as we have. Because anytime somebody's trying to make a left turn, it, it plugs everything up.
Right. The, I think the um, we are now moving in, in the T S P process. We are now moving into the alternatives analysis. So um. The, I think that the next technical memorandum and the next kind of, the next kind of conversation that happens with the, the, the. Public advisory committee will be really informative. Um, I know that, that, that. The recommendation, what's gonna come out of the T S P is that that bridge be widened to at least a three-lane bridge. Um, I don't know what else will come out of that. Um, and that is ODOT infrastructure. And there has been no willingness um from ODOT. To participate or, and even participate and particularly not lead an effort to make the improvements. Um, that are already much needed. Uh, and the IMP. And so I think the other thing that'll come out of the T S P update is what are the current growth projections? And when do we begin to actually see failure of, of intersections? And we're, we're, we're on the cusp of failure of some of those. And I think the data that comes out of the T S P update will be incredibly informative. We're kind of going down a rabbit hole here, good question, but it's, it's kind of not. It's pertinent, but not specifically pertinent to, to the decision before you. Again, the can, the changes that they're asking for, I think staff's um. Concern is the two. Changing from property to properties is actually reaching beyond. To, to attach something to tax lot fifteen hundred is, it's immediately adjacent to proposed parcel two. To reach beyond that tax lot fourteen hundred for this action, we think is, is too much of a push. So we're not, we're comfortable with the word property. We're concerned with chaining peanut two properties. And then the addition of the term. And then the addition of the term over time. One of the things in planning that we should be working towards is making sure that our decisions are clear and objective. And overtime is neither clear nor objective. Because it could mean something different to every one of us sitting here. So what we've said is that prior to the development of proposed parcel parcel two, alternative reasonable access to the adjoining property that front South Main Street must be achieved. That's clearly identifiable. We're we're encumbering parcel two with this subsequent condition to work to provide an alternative access for tax lot fifteen hundred. It's a step in the right direction to meet the the overarching outcome of the IMP. Does it get to everything that's shown on here? No. But it's a step in the right direction and it's clear and objective. It it is attached to the development of parcel two.
What what's what's staff's take on the overtime in particular? I'm a little concerned about that.
Right.
A little unclear to me.
It it is to us as well. And so I think it I think it would be, I think your best bet Chair Burisi is the staff can just conclude their staff report and you just need to go into testimony. Again, as the cities, this there is no proponent testimony because I think I just gave the proponent testimony as part of the staff report. So you would need to go into testimony and opposition. And then to answer your question earlier, Chair Conville, what is neutral testimony? Often, agency testimony is neutral. Now, this may be, this may be testimony in opposition from ODOT or it may be agency neutral testimony. I don't know. They'll they've got to make that choice. But that's often what neutral testimony is. Our neutral testimony is that, hey, I'm not for it or against it. I just don't understand this. Can you explain something to me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think that is definitely unless you have anything else you would add, I think that would conclude the staff report.
Perfect.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, is there, I guess, at this time, is there anyone in addition that wishes to speak in
support?
Support for starting for the long day.
Supporting subdivision.
Of the subdivision. Do you have your twenty-five dead wrong? Okay, is there any opponents or anyone which should speak against the proposed subdivision? Is there anyone with neutral testimony or neutral agency that wishes to speak?
Yes. Hi, I'm Teresa Peniger. ODOT Region Five Thirty Twelve Island Avenue, La Grande, Oregon. So I appreciate that Carla giving some more explanation of some of the discussion around the IMP, particularly figure five point six. And I will know that that is the long-term goals of access management. Also in the document is what we call a midterm. And that's where you see the right in, right out. So I didn't include that here because basically we are moving to because of the development out there that's been proposed. We are moving, you know, quickly to that long-term solution. Plus, on a timeframe within that, you know, where we had projected to be when we did the IMP back in two thousand nine, at this time would be in the long term. But, you know, we do know also in the plan that it says, you know, some things move a little quicker. Some things can move a little slower, that sort of thing. But our ultimate goal is, like we talk, like like you mentioned, you know, how do we address a interchange that was, you know, built many years ago before the development occurred? And we're starting to see those particular issues. Even in two thousand nine, we weren't seeing, you know, the type of development like you're seeing today. And recognizing in the IMP as well that we do have, you know, there is a proposal in there to do a wider bridge that's in there. But the thing of it is, we have to implement the plan and funding is hard to come by right now. And it has been since, you know, the plan was developed. And we've heard that, we've looked at it. We try to figure out, you know, how well, how can we get this funded? It is is a real challenge because it's it's a, you know, today's cost inflation, you know, makes it makes it a challenge for us to do, you know, lots of projects out there. And also typically when we go for, you know, like federal funding, that sort of thing, they're looking at much larger issues than what we're, you know, they would consider on, you know, on their interstate system in other areas, more urbanized areas. So that's our challenge. And, you know, and I think our cooperation in developing on the IMP and cooperation and, you know, working and working together and including us in conversations like this is very important. I think it's in the, you know, in the spirit of the IMP and and collaborating. Getting some more specific things. I would agree that, you know, the plan it's so or what you've identified here as a development. I understand that, you know, the sway, that sort of thing. And I also would point out that at the time, you know, we were giving a high-level look. And I, as far as how how to make this function and still preserve as much, you know, flow and traffic along the corridor, given that, you know, this is really the, you know, the inherent solution before getting a bridge, you know, bridge replacement. I think the what's proposed here as far as the north-south routes and preg drive is meeting that intent to provide that loop road, that loop connection. So I think we we are, we can agree on that, that, you know, it it is meeting the intent intent. It, there was probably things identified when we did the IMP to try to address some of the other things, which is how do you get to a point where you can achieve the long-range access management? And and, you know, and one way of doing that would be, you know, where you place this north-south road. So it'd be adjacent to existing property and that sort of thing. But we understand this can be limitations and stuff. And so we agree that that effectively, we're we're meeting the intent here, providing that, you know, a mid-block road as well as some in the circulation connection to Front Street North South that eventually connects into Oregon Trail. When we talk about, and we wanted to be to be just clear, we understand, you know, yeah, you're right, Carla, that there's effectively, you know, where we would put some of the access points. We just wanted it to be clear. If someone come in that says it's not allowed because that's what's in the plan. So this was an opportunity to put that in there to just, just to, you know, state that upfront if there was any questions in the future. When we move to the other part about the properties. And that that again, when you look at figure five point six, you know, we got the road identified in a general configuration like the plan is calling for. But then you also have the the black arrows, lines of black arrows, which is really talking about, okay, if we're gonna be able to move to having, you know, that controlled flow so it doesn't interrupt or impede the, you know, the turning movements and stuff back at the interchange brands because they're so close together. What do we do in these parcels? How do, and so that's why that's put in there is like, at a time of development, looking for opportunities to make those connections back over to the north-south route. Again, to be able to utilize that loop. Because I think eventually the location of the full access at Oregon Trail, I think in the plan called for maybe some sort of traffic control there in the future if needed. So that would give the ability for get into the properties, provide an access back and you can loop around and come back out and get back to the interchange. That was kind of the whole thought process. I think they're drawn intentionally the way they're drawing the arrows, where they're located at. Because again, trying to address each individual parcels. And I think when we, you know, when looking at this, you know, with the movement of that further to the west, I think it suggested that, hey, we might want to have a baggage road to tax lot fifteen, which is the adjoining property, but also looking at other properties as we've identified here to include that because it's being consistent with the IMP and trying to provide some alternative baggage access that might look a little differently now that's that's moved further to the west with the north-south. And so that's kind of why we're saying that properties, what you can do now, you know, was up to the city as far as, okay, it's gonna affect only parcel two at this time to connect to fifteen. But we're just thinking ahead on on that piece of it as far as trying to meet the intent of the IMP. The other part of that is overtime. And so as I was drafting up the letter, again, it was in in light of the IMP referencing to that. So in other words, trying to say, yes, let's do something to, you know, account for this on parcel two, which is what what you're looking at. But how can we, you know, get to those other properties to try to help address what what Carla was referring to, the, you know, the the Dolan issue? And so that's why we said overtime. So when you looked at it, you know, development of tax lot fourteen hundred and fifteen hundred, then effectively, you know, when those those came about, you'd have at least some, you know, there's you're thinking ahead on this and just saying over time when that occurs, we would look at it continuing that. Now, that's not to say that there might be another opportunity to do something different. But so but it's just kind of laying it out there. You know, that it could happen over time, so it may not happen now, need to happen now. It could happen as those particular parcels come come up for redevelopment. The area between between those parcels, I think, and the other one in the road that goes north-south there, you know, how it develops as well. So I think that's what we were thinking in mind in 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 putting the language that that we're referring to here, just kind of keeping in mind that we're in and that we are in the interchange area, management area. And, you know, I'm not sure if the city has adopted an overlay for this area. It was recommended in the plan as well to help us manage it in this accordance. But that's without doing further research, you know, that's kind of why the also the language there to kind of, again, supporting what we had agreed to back in two thousand nine between the city and Department of Transportation or our Oregon Transportation Commission on how to keep this functioning as long as we can until we can, you know, come up with how we're gonna fund a major project effectively of widening that bridge.
Thanks, Teresa. Quick question, if you don't mind. I guess I'm I'm curious, from your perspective, like, what use case does omitting the verbiage specify? What use cases are you looking at? Specifically in adding this verbiage, like, what does it look like if we don't add that to you? What risk is that, what risk are you looking at?
Well, I did, if you don't add that, then we recommend it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Specifically to the second, looking at the properties and overtime. I'm I'm not necessarily concerned about the first one. It looks, it's honestly pretty straightforward. But the second one, I'm just, there's questions there.
I I think it, you know, again, wanting to ensure that we are you know, eyeing it or reflecting the IMP, the interchange plan and what was required there in the properties because that's what we've got to consider in the future. And that could be done, I mean, it's easement. It could be done as a cross, a cross, you know, access agreement of some sort between properties. There's there's other ways that are identified in the IMP in the text about how to achieve that. So keep that in mind, too. But I think this one, you know, gives a full-on, you know, baggage road or recommendation that we had talked about in a in a a meeting that we had with the city, you know, how how we might achieve that. And this was a solution based upon, you know, some of the shifts and changes that had been made. You know, preg originally was drawn up on the property line and that would have covered fifteen hundred tax lot. Now it's, you know, had to shift, it shifted south, you know, to give various reasons of the city wanted it shifted south there. And so again, just trying to trying to address that and kind of make it fit with the intent of the interchange plan. So I think removal of that would, I mean, you could say property, that I I understand Carla's point. I think I just don't want to lose sight of, you know, what's what the plan is calling for. And then the other piece of it, over time, again, I think saying that it doesn't happen to have happen now along with this subdivision. But we want to move toward that for the properties outside of your subdivision property. So we don't get into the issue of the nexus for properties that are not included in this subdivision plot.
Uh, thank you, Teresa, by the way. Does you have any questions for Teresa? Will we have her attention, I guess, for future testimony? Teresa, do you have anything else to add for testimony, by the way?
Um, I just really appreciate the opportunity that we've had to, you know, work with this and hopefully come up with a good solution that that's, you know, city can support and we can support as well. And look forward to working with Carla and, you know, as they move forward with their TSP and and maybe subsequent IMP amendment. I think it's been a good collaborative work and, you know, we'll we'll, again, we'll work with the decision that you, you know, make. But these are our recommendations and hopefully you'll take that in full consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any rebuttal testimony, I guess, or get from testimony?
Yeah. I get, yeah, the city as the applicant, I'll provide some some rebuttal. I don't know that I really have anything in addition to add. I think we both argued our our points. You know, we're not, we're not specifically opposed to the the one that is actually not a condition, but just a statement within the staff report. We don't think that 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 it's necessarily needed because the ability to take that access is is not practical. But it's not harmful to add that language to the staff report. We do have concerns with the second one. I think the city, the city as the applicant would would recommend that making the change for their first request is not problematic. But we do have some concerns with the second one.
Properties versus overtime?
Properties and overtime. I mean, we have a condition. I think the condition that we drafted is is trying to work towards the the overarching intent of the IMP. And we're trying to do that in a way that doesn't get us also crossways with future development relative to is there a nexus and is there rough proportionality for this? I don't disagree if we had, if we had required that preg be a little further north. That would have given direct access to fifteen hundred. But that also makes a parcel that's pretty small and hard to do a lot with. So by realigning the road, we actually create a better opportunity for development of the larger piece of property that could be there. I I'm not saying that the city is not gonna work with the developer with that property and find compliance with the IMP. But again, officially, you you raise a good point. What is our ability to compel that at the time that that development happens? I I think that's a real good question. I think the developer we've been working with has been very accommodating to the things we've we've we've, the conversation. very accommodating to the things we've, the conversations we've had with them have been positive conversations. Then they've worked with us to meet, I mean, it's like doing this whole road thing here and trying to, they get the IMP. But it is a question that when they come in with their next development proposal, we're going to have to have that conversation. And they could raise, well, why us? And that's the conversation that will happen then. And we'll have that conversation. I think this condition, as we've written it, does compel us to assure that tax lot fifteen hundred gets access across parcel two or some alternative to across parcel two to get access not on Main Street. Depending on how we accomplish that, we may never encumber proposed parcel two. We may encumber the property to the north, and that might be a better place to encumber it. So we're, we want to be really conscientious in how we write that condition so that we're not specifically saying your only route to get access is across parcel two. We just have to get to reasonable, as we've said here, achieve reasonable access to the adjoining property that fronts South Main Street. That does not mean that we won't work with that landowner to achieve reasonable access to the adjoining properties. But my concern is, again, that Nolan and Dolan passed around essential, you know, keep coming, essential nexus and rough proportionality. But again, we're going to have that conversation when that development happens. So I would just ask you to leave the subsequent condition as it is, and we're happy to add the other language to the staff report as ODOT has requested. And again, we're going to continue to work in good faith with ODOT, but we're going to continue to push for what works for the city at the same time.
And then my question, too, then, is if it versus overtime, why isn't it upon development versus overtime? What's the difference between the two?
Well, yeah, I think overtime for us is nebulous. What does that mean? Oh, we're not going to do it with this development, but we'll do it with the third time it redevelops? I mean, overtime is just kind of, it's a nebulous term. What does that mean? Actually, upon development. But we have said, I guess the other part of that is from a timing perspective, we've provided a timing perspective in the condition as written because it says prior to the development of proposed parcel two. So we've included a timing element already in the condition as we've proposed it. And I don't know what overtime means.
I mean, I'm just trying to think of if I was fourteen hundred and fifteen hundred and mine access at this point is Main Street. You know, they obviously, you know, you can't close them in. But if it's not developed on the other property, then how do they have access to, you know? And is it a one-way street that takes them out one way versus the other? So we can continue to have a right-in and then you go out to the other roads?
Well, right-in and right-out is a fairly, and the current, the IMP envisions that an interim step is right-in, right-out for fronters as well as these accesses. For front, for sure, and I think for the accesses as well. The IMP kicks in upon redevelopment. Now, for the tax lot fifteen hundred, there is no development. But if there's, at the time they do develop that piece of property, if there's no alternative access, we can't deny them the ability to develop. It may be that their access is a right-in, right-out. Depending on where we are in kind of this process of moving from where we are to where we eventually want to be. So, you know, three years from now, we're kind of to the right-in, right-out phase, let's say. And they develop, then they could develop with the right-in, right-out. So it's an interesting piece of property fifteen hundred is because it is fair and the IMP has a trigger of redevelopment. And for them, it wouldn't be redevelopment, it would be development, but there is no. If they came in tomorrow and wanted to put something on that property, we would approve it and they would have access to Main.
Okay. So then the other question is, why does the Craig Road have to go where it's at? Why can't it go up closer and be more of a like cul-de-sac type road and not go all the way through so that you could rezone that, that, what is it, parcel two? Because then if you moved, if you could move it up, you would be able to have a road or a cul-de-sac, you know, type thing that would access fourteen and fifteen and.
So part of the problem with realigning, you could certainly move Craig to align with the property line. But there's no mechanism for it to go north because we don't own the property.
Okay. Does that make sense?
And the putting Craig where it is, and just so you all know, that's a recognition of rule, just so you all know. Moving the road to the north, again, in the spirit of Mr. Mon and his desire to work with the adjoining property owners, that makes the ability to connect their property and this property. So it's a larger parcel for development opportunity. Yeah. So it's really about, we're trying to figure out how to maximize the development, the develop space.
Difficult set. Think Carla would have a headache. Her name's letter would be called quarter circle.
Oh, true, true.
Ha, 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 Commissioner Irons. Sorry, y'all had to be in a meeting to understand.
Yes, I do.
That would be the city's rebuttal. So now I'll let you close your hearing and move into deliberation. And I think at this point in time, I've kind of acted as the applicant. I'm going to rely on Stephanie to act as staff while moving forward.
Okay. Sounds good. We covered everything.
I think so.
All of our testimony? Okay, all right. We'll close the public hearing at nineteen eighteen. And discussion. The conditions as written. Well, I explained one subsequent condition approval. Verbiage, like so from ODOT, verbiage on the first item, which was, I wonder if I can get back. For the order. It will create a B three, adding, and not allow to have direct access to Main Street. I, I think that's pretty prudent slash, I would think it would be obvious as well, but I think it's pretty safe verbiage to add. I think it makes sense. There's not a lot of room for that to happen, but potential changes and reflexes like I did, that would be, that would make sense. I got two issues with it. Do you have any thoughts on that? No.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. Okay, so thoughts on the next, next proposition that we heard from ODOT specifically on, with a condition for proposed parcel two, the verbiage of speaking plural properties and adding the verbiage over time. So I'm reading that as it would read, prior to development, proposed parcel two, alternative reasonable access to the adjoining properties that runs South Main Street must be achieved over time would be the proposed verbiage. My personal thoughts, I guess, is I think properties makes sense to catch potential use cases. I'm trying to think of potential use cases over time. I'm not even sure, but that might catch or make a difference, to be honest. The overtime, I'm in agreeance that it's super vague, which always concerns me in terms of the flags. I want to block or hold potential, you know, any potential planning because of lack of foresight in adding nebulous verbiages. That's my only concern with that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the word properties either because it seems like we are talking about separate. I mean, really, if you think about it, there's actually three separate laws that we would be talking about that would lose their access to Main Street. It would be, you know, all three, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen hundred that would potentially lose their access to Main Street. So we are talking about more than just one property.
I think the other issue is that, like, the condition like as written is, already has a time-based aspect prior to development, parcel two. And then we're adding, we're talking about adding, potentially adding over time, another time-based component.
So the definition of that is something happens over time. It happens gradually during a long period. It is not set. So it's open-ended.
I would think it would be to pick one or the other, not sit on the fence.
I don't want, I don't, I'd rather it be defined and not open-ended over time. Over time, it's too, it's too.
I don't, I mean, so personally, I don't necessarily mind that over time. I would think two things would need to have to happen. First of all, we have to get grip prior to the build. We've already got a time condition that has to change or be removed or made completely. And we have to define a little more what overtime means. I think that starts getting really confusing. I think it's really.
Every person has a different definition of it because it's open-ended according to definition.
I think it's open to kind of worms.
Because, oh, I was going to get to that. I'm going to get that in time. I'll get to it. I'll get that in time. It could be twenty years down the road.
Yeah, and it could very well be used as a reason why things don't get done.
Yeah.
It's overtime.
Because, yeah.
I just like more defined. So my question to the commissioner is like, okay, say we, for a thought exercise, let's say we do not include the verbiage over time. Is the condition as written specific enough with the verbiage of prior to development proposed parcel two? Or does it make too much ambiguity? Do you have any use cases where that would put us in a poor position in the future? Firstly, I don't think so. But we'd love to hear your thoughts.
And your recognition to me? Yeah, so initial testimony from ODOT is to include the verbiage with that condition approval of properties and the word overtime. City's rebuttal is to not include the verbiage overtime and sounds like abstains from property versus properties.
We prefer property. Prefer property standard.
See, I'm kind of stuck on, as it reads to me, the prior to development. When's it going to be developed? That's undetermined. So the way I'm reading it is the same as overtime. It's not determined, right?
And then, and then by must, right, it will happen at that time. Right, that's all I'm believing.
So basically, in order to develop it, it has to be done first.
But that's not, it's no different than what we've determined we were going to do in regards to stuff out on Laurel Lane that we had had in discussion with the business owner out there. They wanted everything done right now. And we said, upon development, we would work with the people because we have other issues, we have more pressing issues. And that's the way that stayed. So if that's the thought process, let's keep it. And leave it as is, my opinion.
With the word property or properties?
It's property.
So do we put ourselves at risk by omitting this verbiage? Omitting what verb? The properties and overtime. That's the recommendation from ODOT. Yes.
I just can't get over the fact that it is multiple properties, though. So whether it's property or properties, I don't think that's the issue. It's the overtime part that's the issue. Because we are talking about more than one location or more than one person that potentially own it. So I don't, like I said, I don't have a problem with the properties. It's what is overtime.
Right, but what's, I mean, why are we putting it in there? Just because? I mean, does it benefit the city to change it? I don't see how it does. I mean, I don't. If it's already written, why add more to or change it? Now, down with the overtime thing, I get that because it's open-ended. There's no definition there. The other one, if it's not benefiting us or something that we all understand, obviously, it's not. So why change it?
So including the verbiage of properties and overtime, does that pose any substantial risk?
I think the overtime could.
So I'm trying to see what, you know.
Again, I mean, even if, even if, I mean, we're just talking about, you know, not having it defined as a person. When, you know, when it's going to be done. I mean, one person's definition, her definition of overtime might be different than the person that takes over when she retires. And then we have a different situation that's still written as it is.
Right, right. So overtime should be changed to upon development, before development, or?
It currently says prior to development of parcel two.
Prior to development. Right.
But that gives us a more clear than overtime. Though leaving it would be, I think it would be okay without the overtime. But property versus properties, you know, they're owned by multiple people. So I think we need to represent the fact that it is not just one person's property that is multiple properties.
So you're aligned with changing property to properties, but omitting overtime?
Yes.
Okay. And you're aligned with that as well?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, at this point, as far as that goes, overtime thing is definitely.
Do you guys want to know why I put property instead of properties?
Yes, yes.
So the reason, because it's adjoining property. So this condition was specifically to get access to the one property on Main Street that butts our subject property. Because the idea that when you look at, in the IMP, even though the roadway doesn't specifically line up here, there is this alternate access. And Teresa, for your benefit, I'm pointing to the north, the arrow of the north of fourteen hundred. So the idea was if, if somebody, separate from the owner of this property to the north, which is where the, near the hotel and all that, if there's a separate owner that purchases proposed parcel two, then they can provide alternate access to fifteen hundred without having to have just one spot identified for them. They could put it anywhere across fifteen hundred. They could put it anywhere across, uh, fifteen hundred to the south. Now, they may align it, if it is, um, in coordination with that property to the north. To allow for a straight-up cross-access for fifteen, fourteen and thirteen hundred. But we, I didn't want to define the location of that access easement for them. And when I use the word adjoining property, I'm specifically talking about the one property that it joins it. And, and, uh, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred, which is now, uh, we've replatted, it's just one piece of property, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred, um. Uh, that black arrow that points across there, that, that could provide access to both those properties if it came just south of the existing hotel. So that was my thought process, I didn't want to, um, hold somebody to providing access to all three, when there may be alternate, other alternatives available, so. I think at the end of the day, it may not matter, but that's why I did the singular proper, adjoining property.
Yeah, all right, uh, Regna, I, I don't wanna leave you ignored in Cyberland. Uh, do you, do you have any thoughts on, on any of this?
Yeah, I did, but somebody keeps turning my mic off. I, um, was, yes, I would keep it property, and then at the end of that sentence, do you need anything past that? If you take out the, any time, or whatever it is. Overtime.
Yeah, you, so you, you.
Do you have to have something at the end of that sentence?
No.
Well, then. Overtime is not measurable. You can't really hold any thing, anybody to overtime. So if you don't need anything at the end of that sentence, just don't put it, just leave it out.
Yeah, it adds a second component of time to the condition. Which I, I agree, I think it money that it does substantially, um. Without enough to. No reason to dictate otherwise, whatever.
Because it would always be that discussion with a developer or whatever, hey, when are you planning on having this done by, or, you know? I mean, that can be in the, um, planning, um. Meetings. With the developer. So I go property, and then I would leave out the overtime, or I would just end that sentence.
Agreed. Yeah, I, I, I would, I think I'd agree, I think probably this verbiage, prior to development of the post-party two. Is fairly succinct and, and covers that. I mean, does anyone else want to talk about anything else, have any other discussion items, or, I don't, I don't want to keep, you know.
That's all I had.
Okay. Okay, uh, with no discussion, I would entertain a motion to, uh, either approve or not approve. Uh, the, uh, proposal either has written, uh. Specific verbiage to the subsequent condition, are any changes? There are two changes proposed by, uh, ODOT, through neutral testimony. First one for adding, and not allowed to have direct access to Main Street. Addition, and then the, the second, uh, recommendation of them. So to include or not include, I would prefer a, a, that is a singular, either, uh, both or none. Uh, or to specify one or the other, which is the subsequent condition of approval to include, uh, change, to alter property to properties. And then append overtime to the end of that condition. That was a lot. No one, no one wants to make this, you know, a very, very long, when the, uh, probably have to.
Can we just say, as, as your risk department, with, with the, with the addition of the first part?
Yes, that could be your motion, Commissioner Connell, if, if that's what your intent.
Okay, I would like to propose a motion to approve as written, with the exception of, um. Or adding the first part, that's correct, right?
Yeah, adding the first.
Yeah, which is not allowed direct access to Main Street in DIB twenty-five dash zero, 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 one. That it? Yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion to. Approve, uh, condition as read, with the one additional change of the rendition by ODOT to add the verbiage and not allow them to access to Main Street. As the only change. Uh, so in motion, we would need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. To approve the application would be condition of approval for one change that I, like you said, uh, okay. Let's, let's go for a roll call vote, just to keep it even.
So just to be clear, the motion is to accept it as presented with the one addition to the staff report to add the sentence.
And not allow.
And not allow to have direct access to Main Street.
Yes, as part of approval criteria, B dot C.
Yes.
Yes.
So, Commissioner Connell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner Layton.
Yes.
Commissioner Irons.
Yes.
And Chair Parisi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you to everyone for that.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you very much, Teresa.
Right, thank you.
I, I would just say that, again, we have a good working relationship with the developer that is working on this property. I, I, I think we can get to a resolution. I'm just really concerned about having it being, how we dictate that. And I, I'm concerned about how that, how we dictate it. I, because I, I think we can get them to work with us, but we need to give them some flexibility in how they achieve the outcome. It has to work within what they're proposing is developing. So if we say the only option is this type of easement in this location. You think we, we stymie the opportunity to have a conversation about what works. Not only what works for the, the properties that are impacted by the IMP, but the property that could develop as well. It's gotta be something that works for everybody. That, that's, that's where I want to have it.
Yeah. Fair enough.
Have a good, good rest of your evening. I'm gonna sign off, thanks, bye.
Okay, moving on to discussion items.
So again, I have been including my planning official update that goes to the city council, you get a little later than they do, um. Uh, today, we had, um, Jennifer Baker attending. We had the economic opportunity analysis, the very first PAC meeting for that. Um, got that project kicked off. It got a little delayed because of the strategic planning process that we've done. Um, but if you head to the website and go, you know, across the top bar, you pick community and kind of go to the strategic plan and see everything that's going on. There's getting to be more and more information on there. So you could see what's happening with TSP, with Parks Master Plan. Um, the EOA finally has some stuff on through there now with today's meeting, um, and then the comprehensive plan and development code. Um, the council did adopt the strategic plan at the beginning of this month. Um, it's now posted on, um, the website in a couple different places. So things are happening, uh, there's a lot happening. Um, TSP is on track to adopt, um, by Christmas. Nice little Christmas present. Um, the EOA is probably on track to adopt in August-ish. Um, Parks Master Plan is on track to adopt July-ish. Um, and then the development code and comprehensive plan is probably April or May of next year. So that'll be the last one. The system development charges project is still kind of on hold. Um, as we're waiting for all the parks planned and TSP and updated CIP. Um, and, and that's coming fairly quickly. Um, we continue to do work on the Boardman Municipal Code. Um, lots is changed with Tower Road, and the city owns about three hundred acres, just right at three hundred acres out at Tower Road. Um, over time, the city has sold a little piece to UEC and then a little bigger piece to Loves. Um, there would, it would identify that Three Mountain Farms was actually farming part of the city's property, and so they sold some, about eighty acres of the south end of the farm. And then there's, uh, some Potains Origins out there, too, um, that the city sold a little piece of that off. It, that property, when I first started working at the county, was probably about four hundred and, four hundred and sixty-seven is the number that's in my head. Um, but over time, with those things that have happened, it's about three hundred acres now. We're in the process of dividing that property. Um, we appealed the, the county's planning commission decision to the board of commissioners. Um, because we felt that the, um, planning commission had overreached in their authority, um, to deem a private access easement a public, uh, basically a public road. Um, and it's not, and so we've appealed. Um, we've had our attorney talk to their attorney, and we've come to a front-end agreement. So hopefully, we get in front of the board and it just gets approved as we've, as we're asking for the changes. But that hearing will happen April sixteenth, whatever that Wednesday is in April. Um. We, um, are retaining, um, the RV Park proposal is off the table at this point in time out there. Um, so parcel one and parcel two are, are north of Coosie, um, we're just creating parcels and time will tell. Um, the parcel to the south, once the land partition is completed, um, the potential purchaser of that property, property will move forward with the zone change. We were gonna do that internally or in-house, and, um, we've, we've changed that, and they're now gonna take that on and do that work. So lots of changes happening out there, in fact, it might be even different than what I wrote there. Um, park blocks east and west, um, work continues on that, this subdivision that we just worked through tonight, thank you. Um, moves us up another step forward with the park blocks. Um, when there's some work that's gonna start this spring, and the property where the splat, no. Um, where the dog park and the dog park, that parking lot that was that, just that gravel parking lot that was created there. Those two lots have been sold, the city owned that, that has been sold. So we are gonna be relocating the dog park over, uh. Where first, where the first street comes down on, on the far side, the dog park will be just on this side of the new street.
Wait, which street?
First. So if you go past the sleep-in and come down, and go to Oregon Trail.
Yeah.
Between, or, under the BPA line, just beside of First Street.
On the north side of Oregon Trail?
North side of Oregon Trail, just this side of First, that's where the dog park will be.
Okay.
Next to, uh, Jones.
No, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, when we did the street, there's a little parking lot that got paved there, so when you take that street and look right past there, you'll see a nice little paved area. We also stepped it for water and wastewater, could be a, a bathroom there at some point in time in the future, some other amenities, um, to support that. Um, had a change in staffing for our, um, code enforcement and animal control program. We're gonna be moving to code compliance as opposed to code, code enforcement, enforcement. Um, uh, Chief Albert Corxus is not with the city any longer, um, and Norma Ayala is in that position now, full-time. Well, not yet full-time, full-time March thirty-first, so.
Well, next Monday.
Yeah.
Or the one day after.
The Monday after.
Yeah.
The Monday after, yes, the Monday after. Um, so homes are picking up again, we kind of had a, a lull through the winter, um, which is very common. Um, but we're seeing that pick up again, um. Commercial development, uh, of course, you guys approved the, the Burger King and the Circle K. Uh, we continue to work with them on their developer proposal. Um, and that, of course, is all tied into the roadwork that's starting, uh, this afternoon. There was a bidders meeting, bidders conference. Um, for those who are interested in bidding the South Main project, which is the improvements to South Main, as well as front, the new Southwest First and Oregon Trail. Um, Prague is shown on that subdivision is, there will be subs. Um, but that is not proposed for, for build, that will be built by the developer when they, when we sell parcel two. And that all develops, that's a, that's a cost of development is Prague. Um. Lots of things happening in the background, um, there's some things that I'll be able to share at some point in time, but let me just tell you, it's getting fun.
Nice.
Yes. Stephanie, would you add anything?
I would not add anything.
Are really?
No, she wouldn't.
Okay. I, I will say that, um. Stephanie worked for me, I don't know how long you worked for me. Seven years, eight years, seven?
Yeah, I, probably about six and a half.
No, the county.
At the county, yeah, um.
And then you still can't work to work here. All right, well, certainly.
Under duress.
Um.
It'll all work out over time.
Over time.
Over time, yeah, yeah. No, I, I told she might get my job when I retire, I, I don't know, maybe I thought I was in that. What I will say is Steph was a really good planner, and I had a lot of respect for her. Um, she, uh. Yeah, I caught that, yeah.
That's a past tense.
No, I'm saying, I'm, in that role at the county, I had a lot of respect for her. She proved herself to be a, a good planner, and somebody who. I, I think worked hard to make sure that we met the spirit and intent of the code requirements. Um, I had to push her sometimes to figure out how to find that balance, um, with, uh, you know, what the, what, what the customer really wanted to do with project. Um, but, uh, she works good with people at the counter, too. And so when the opportunity came to add this principal planner position, it was really easy to call her and say, hey. We're opening this position at the city, and I'd really like you to fly. And my other thing I will say is that she's a much better trainer than I am. By leaps and bounds. In fact, I don't know how she learned what she knows, because she didn't work for me. So, um, but Arely's been on board three months now?
Three, six? Five.
Five? See, time is flying, it's just flying, five minutes. And I just have to give Stephanie a lot of credit, because, uh, she's really the one who's helping Arely understand the basics. I mean, I'm great at telling good stories and talking about philosophy and theory, and, and saying things like, yeah, we can do that. They make it happen, and.
Professor.
Yeah, I, thank you, yes, yes, I, I'm a teacher in this role, and, uh, I teach the theory and the philosophy. Stephanie teaches the code, so, um.
I'm really process-driven. It's, that's how my brain works.
Yeah, well, and, and I am, too, and what's interesting about the process piece is, uh. My husband recently became a city councillor in the community where we live. And over the past probably five years, he's kind of moved. He first started serving on the budget committee, became the chair after the first year, and they, they asked him to join the planning commission, and did, it wasn't very long, he became the chair of the planning commission. And I can't tell you how many conversations we've had about process.
Well, I'm sure it's a daily.
Well, okay, so, so the text I got from him this afternoon, uh, under the end of the day. When I texted him and I said, hey, throw the blue top, tech, tech, I said, uh, put the blue towels in the dryer, please. His reply was, just escaped from a city personnel committee meeting. So we're gonna have a really good conversation when I get home tonight, guaranteed, it will be a really good conversation. But, um, we talk a lot about process, and for him, coming from industry. So for those of you that have worked in industry all your life, and you look at this and go, I just don't get the process. He didn't either, and, and, but it's interesting to see how, he asked me one time. he asked me one time, he says, are you a good planner because you were a process person? Or did you become a process person because you became a planner? I don't think I can answer that. I've been doing this twenty-five years. I don't think I can go back and think about that and answer that. But I think for Stephanie, she was a process person before she got here.
Absolutely, yeah. I spent a little bit of time when I was going to school with Teresa. There's definitely a process.
Yeah.
I worked for Department of Corrections for a little while. There's definitely a process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're completely built on one, or plenty of them.
Well, nine times out of ten, if you make an error and a decision gets appealed, the decision you made is probably fine. It has more to do with how you got there. I mean, I tried to be really quiet when you guys were deliberating on that condition, because you all needed to deliberate on it. You needed to take that process and come to your decision and why you came to that decision. And I think your conversation about, well, what's the difference between prior to development and overtime?
Right.
They're both, I mean, your conversation about that was a good conversation, because it supported your decision to not add overtime. Now, the property versus properties, that's probably a little more nebulous. Yeah. Well, and I think for me, I think Stephanie's comment about why, why did I put property?
Yeah, that's really helpful, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's how my.
You could have said that at the beginning. Could have saved it for ten minutes for a little reason.
I thought about it, but I didn't want to interrupt, and I wanted to hear the. So I was like, okay, we're going to go in circles until you guys figure out why there was the word property. So, and then that really comes to like process for me too, because that's how I looked at it, was it was adjoining one property, so.
Yeah.
And I will tag on to what Carla said. I mean, she gave me a lot of praise, and I appreciate it. And I still don't know if she had respect for me, if she had respect for me. Bo. Move past that.
Well, we should know it was that one time there.
Yeah, you'll find it over time.
Yeah, overtime.
Something earned you the time.
Well, what I will say is.
Are we still on the record?
Yeah, we are. It does make it pretty easy when you're training somebody that learns well, so. I think that helps. So, O'Reilly's doing a great job.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Anyway, thank you for your time tonight. We do not have anything for April. Correct.
Right.
May is questionable. There's still time for something to come in for May.
We technically have an application that may be on May's.
Right.
But with conversations, they may withdraw it, so we'll see what happens.
So, my problem with the May meeting is I will be probably in a near Rapid City, South Dakota on that night. So I would be joining remotely. Stephanie may not be here that week as well. And I think it would be really hard to leave it in O'Reilly's hands all by herself. So even if we have an application for May, we may have some conversations about maybe moving the May date or something. So I guess I'm just saying that. There will not be an April meeting. May is just, there's just a lot of.
It has to change, it has to change.
Yeah, there's just a lot of things going on around that right now. So we'll keep you posted on that front. My only last question would be, we went through a lot of training there for a while. I mean, we did a lot of stuff, and I think you guys got a lot out of it. My question would be, is there anything else you would want to come back to? Again, we wouldn't do this in April or May. And I would only do it dependent upon, you know, if there's something on the calendar, you know, find some ballots or something. But is there anything else you guys would like to dive into or have a little bit more information on? At some point in time, there'll be work sessions on all of these things we're doing, the Parks Master Plan. And those things will be coming too, because we'll actually be adopting the Parks Master Plan, we'll be adopting the EOA. So there will be some work sessions and public hearings on those documents as we move from summer and then the TSP into the fall, and then next late winter, spring into the Comp Plan and Development Code.
Would it make sense to talk about those before they're updated?
That's what, I guess that's kind of what I'm asking, is would you like to have just kind of a general session to just kind of talk about each of these things and about kind of what we're doing and what this adoption process might look like?
Yeah, we'd do it down the road a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, it would be a June, it would be a June conversation.
Oh, yeah. As long as it's not this month.
No, 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 no. Okay, I'm going to say June Planning Commission, we're going to talk about adoption process. We're just. We can do that. I just, I don't want to start the process and then, hey, you guys go, what are we really doing, and why are we doing it, and how does this work? So.
Yeah, there is a wonderful meeting.
Yep. So we'll do that. We'll plan that for June. Okay.
Does Ragna have anything to add? Does she?
No, I'm good.
Well, I don't think there's any public to comment tonight. Chair Parisi?
Okay. Any comments from the commission? Slam the hammer. The turn of time, it is the nineteen fifty-seven. Are we have the record down?
We are. No, turn the, right now.
We're off the record, so we're. Goodnight, Ragna.